Meeting to order, be stand for the implication. Commissioner Parnell.
All right, Lord, we just want to thank you for waking us up this morning, having breath in our body to come to this meeting to do, make the best decisions that we can make for Columbia County. Want to ask you to be with those families of the senseless victims or senseless crimes in New Orleans, and thank you, Lord, for, Happy New Year, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, everlasting.
Do we have any additions or deletions?
We do not.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, approve the agenda. All in favor? All opposed? Been approved. Okay, we're going to talk about the committee. Rocky, you got them all, we're not doing anything. Okay, I want to name these all for you. District One, Commissioner Parnell, you'll have the Non-Abalorum Assessments Adjustment Committee, the Value Adjustment Board, and the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Okay, good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
District Two, Commissioner Ford, you'll have the North Florida Economic Development Partnership, the Economic Development Advisory Board, and the Small County Coalition. Mr. Hollinsworth will have the Florida Crown Workforce Development Board, Non-Abalorum Assessments Adjustment Committee, and Swanee River Economic Council Ship Program. District Four, Commissioner Phillips will have Swanee Valley Transit Authority, Transportation the Disadvantaged Coordinating Board, and the Value Adjustment Board. District Five, Commissioner Murphy, who is not here at this time, will have the Broadband Committee, the Tourist Development Council, the Swanee Valley Transit Authority, Small County Coalition, Florida Association of County Trust Board, and the 911 Combined Communications. All right, we're done with that, we'll have public hearings now. Mr. Gooden?
Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Happy New Year.
What we've got is a hearing for a special permit application, this is for a laser light show to be held the weekend of January 11th at the Lake City Race Track. The petitioner is Brad Broom of Hot Air Blue Management for Tom Vale, the owners there.
Thank you, Mr. Gooden. We'll now open public comment, public hearing on this. Is anybody to speak for or against? Not seen anyone, we'll now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
It's in my district, I'll prove it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can I get a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for the adoption of consent agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. All right, Mr. Foreman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a request for an adoption hearing to be set. The board may or may not be aware, sometimes I forget, we do participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. That's where we come up with all the FEMA flood maps that we all look at from time to time. It's our participation in that program that allows our folks to get appropriate coverage. That's something that's coordinated through the Building and Zoning Office, and there is a floodplain ordinance that has to be adopted from time to time. It gets audited by an outside expert. They've come in and audited to do an update. It's the first one we've done in, I think, about seven or eight years. I need to have an adoption hearing set for February 20th. The agenda says January 16th, I'm asking for an additional month so I can run a few things by the consultant and have plenty of time to get it published in terms of the notice we have to send out. So that's all I'm really asking for today, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the...
So you just need a motion to approve that date?
Just to approve February 20th at the board.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And, Mr. Chair, just as a brief update, also on February 20th, I hope, hope, to have the adoption hearing on the campgrounds ordinance.
Okay, good deal.
But I'm going to bring those probably to the next board meeting to ask for that hearing.
I appreciate your work on that, Joe, because I had some concern with that, you know, we've had some expansion, which we said could happen, but...
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirby?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item we have to talk about this morning is down at Rump Island. As we've discussed before, we have some erosion on the bank, and we need some repair on our boardwalk dock. This is a grant that will accomplish that. Grant is for $212,900 via the Swanee River Water Management. It will require a match, $25,200, but that can be funded via your vessel fees, so this is not a budget impact. You have the funding in place to accommodate that match. Good project needed to be done, so I'm requesting a motion to approve memorandum of cost share agreement.
So moved.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Second by Mr. Quiet Man over here. Oh, okay, do we have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next is simply a housekeeping issue. As everyone is aware, we're in the transition phase of going into a utility authority. Utilities are a hot ticket right now, we're in growing veins. This is simply a housekeeping issue. We have overcomplicated the need for labor in this particular position. So basically, we're just changing some language and doing away with certification. We need a more versatile employee. This is no budget impact. I'm requesting a motion to approve the creation of maintenance tick position for the Utilities Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Board, before I finish up here, I've had a lot of calls as it relates to leftover debris pickup, if you may. We went out, times to get away from it, a few days ago, and I sent a team of guys out to take a look at what we've got out there in the county. I feel very, I'm always careful, I'm sure there's a load or two that we've overlooked. So I want to encourage you, if people reach out to you, to circle back to me. We've identified, identified roughly 68 loads countywide. When I say 68 loads, what I call our little lightning trucks, 330-yard trucks, that are simply placed there way post-storm activities. I feel comfortable in saying 99.9% of everything that was done within the timeframe we discussed has been picked up and removed. Obviously, our contractors have left town, so forth and so on, but our attorney just returned from vacation day, and I've got a lot of talking to do, and one of the items of this conversation is, I'm going to need his input, where does the liability lie right there? So we know they put it out there way after the storm, we got pictures and videos and stuff like that. When I say the storm, I cut off. In my mind, pile of debris, side road, car hit, pile of debris, you know, where does that go? We've got record, we know where it's at. That being said, the purpose of conversation is, please, if somebody reaches out to you, don't commit either way, circle back to me. I will be forwarding each of you this list tonight of the location and the proper cubic yardages that we've identified that was either, they just keep putting it out there. So it's a conversation, Joel, I need to have, but I want to make you aware, I think I am aware of all these locations, okay? Thank y'all.
And, Mr. Chair, to, to remind the board, I'm sorry. You want me to go ahead? We had instructed code staff at the end of the year to sort of take a soft touch with folks and say, hey, you know, you really can't have that here anymore. I think we had talked about as of January 1st, they're going to go back to the citation process. So we're going to have to dovetail all this together, but Mr. Kirby's exactly right, at the end of the day, we can't afford to have particularly these larger stumps sitting too close to our right-of-way if we know about it. We're going to have to do something about it.
And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, to take Joe, Joe's comment a little further, that's where I'm torn, is I'm getting folks saying, look, my kid can't see the school bus for the pile of debris. Hey, I always, you know, I got a phone call this morning, I almost hit a pile of debris coming at work, was not there a few days ago, right? So that's where I need to get with our counselor and say, where do you think we stand with this? Either do we go ahead and pick it up, then do we document it and send them a bill later on? I don't know, that's a conversation he and I need to have, but I wanted the board to be aware that I am aware of the loads out there.
Hey, I want to ask you something, Kirby. Mr. Kirby, what, remember that call I got in Live Oak from the Swanee County folks? And I think, is that Rocky's district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you get a call, what was the name of that road? It's a strange name, Matate, it's out there where the county line is.
Montego.
Montego. I just want you to be aware, I want you to be aware that I think, a lot of them think you're supposed to be picking it up, and we're not, you know, we're not, because we've, we've got a, an agreement with Swanee County to pick those up, so I just...
I hadn't got a call.
So, so that's a good example, there's a good example. So on Montego, which is 247 Rapid Highway, at Columbia-Swanee Line, way out there by that Paddle West Net, Montego is the county line, right? Well, it's not reasonable for a grader to do one half on a dirt road and not the other half. Many, many years ago, I made a deal with Swanee County that we'll do it up to a certain point the entire road, and then Swanee County takes from there and continues going. Does that make sense? So whatever reason, we were fortunate enough to be finished real early compared to some others. Well, Swanee County, at the time of that conversation, just had simply not made it there yet. So those taxpayers like, and, and that's a good example, Commissioner Oliver, those taxpayers were like, look, we pay taxes in Columbia County, they were simply unaware of our agreement with Swanee County that was made many years ago. In that particular case, those are what I call legal loads. They had them out there, Swanee County just has not got to them yet. We're this late in the game, we sent multiple teams around policing, videoing, taking pictures, and we cleared a road, and now there's four more piles on the same road, there's no way. Now, once again, for the record, Joe and I are going to get together, I'm in the opinion we just go ahead and pick them up, document it, and go on for that. That's a conversation that he and I need to have, I was waiting with him. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Just, just for your information, Rocky, you might want to call someone. No, I'll get with you. All right, Mr. Krabs?
So the first item on the agenda, thank you very much, Commissioners, is the proposed 2025 legislative agenda based on conversations. Stash developed a memo that's in your agenda packet, which identifies what we believe your wishes are to express to the legislative delegation on the 8th of January. So that would include requesting $2.3 million for the Swanee Valley Communication Towers continued funding. We really do need to address the fiscally constrained definitions. Some of them, and they're, they're all over the legislature, and Stash can give you the details, some of them are based on populations, different programs are based on different populations, some of them are based on what's fiscally constrained. If we exceed those thresholds, and we don't get those thresholds changed, we risk losing a significant amount of funding, especially SCOP, Scrap, and SIGP. We are not the only county in that ballpark, but we still believe we should go to the legislature and encourage them to change those definitions, amend those definitions. So the third one is, if we do exceed those definitions and they no longer consider us a rural county, phasing it over five or six years to compensate for that. The biggest thing is the fiscally constrained. One bill will not equal the threshold for fiscally constrained, so we are still fiscally constrained. The other thing was the hospital authority. Joe and I talked about it before the meeting. In our conversations, there's still a lot of outstanding issues that need to be resolved in the legislature. So we're looking at actually presenting that to the legislature in October. We'll discuss it on the 8th, but the actual bill itself would be presented in October. Do you want anything to that, Joe?
No, I think that's where we stand.
And then other priorities are, we've been trying to help the school board, we're expecting them to request money for the BDAs in the schools so that your first responders can actually get radio signals while they're in school districts. For the most part, their buildings are constructed such that, right now, you don't have that. Sheriff's deputies can't talk to sheriff's deputies or police, ambulance first responders can't talk, so if you were to have a first shooter or some other significant event, the first responders don't know what they're doing. They don't, they can't hear each other. So this is trying to encourage the school district to ask for BDAs in all the schools. And the second is, we're working with the North Florida Water Utilities Authority. They were discussing requesting two projects, one in Swanee County, one in Columbia County. The one we feel they should request in Columbia County is an upgrade of the pump station in Ellisville and a new six-inch force main from that pump station to the sewer plant, which would support the development of the busybee. Any questions, things we may have missed, things you want to add? Okay. The next one is the ground lease. We've been approached by Cox Communications, they want to put in a terminal, a hub, where they can connect their fiber optics going both ways. They would love to do it on County Road 18, they would love to do it on our property where we own the fire station. I did go out there Tuesday and verify there is enough land left that is undeveloped. The land kind of squared off on your map, 0.25 acres, that they could use, they cleared up, they do all the building, we're just leasing them the land. $30,000 a year, it increases 3.3% a year. It is a 10-year lease with four five-year additional renewals. It does not impact where Kevin stores his equipment, does not impact where the pump station is, does not impact the fire station. So we're seeking your approval to lease that land to Cox Communications.
You get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the ground lease agreement with Cox Communications.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Too far. Where'd it go, Lord? All right, well, we'll go without the presentation. This, did you get it? All right. Right there. So the people who do our ship program, Swanee Economic Development, they want to add a program. It is an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. So they want to amend the L-HAP to include an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program targeting low and very low-income residents. They want a maximum for that program to be $40,000. Of course, it would be a lien that would decrease over time, five-year self-dissolving lien, kind of like we do with the other ship programs, and they're just asking you to amend the L-HAP to include that.
Do we have a motion?
Move. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Parnell. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
So since we amended the L-HAP, we now have to redo the agreement with them to do the ship program itself so that it can include that agreement. So this next item is just to redo the agreement with the Swanee River Economic Council for the administration of our ship program.
I'll make a motion, we approve sub-recipient administration agreement.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is an easy one. The Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources offers a lot of historic preservation grants, one of which is specifically for abandoned African-American cemeteries. We're asking permission to apply for a $50,000 grant with no match requirement to renovate the, or to spruce up the Union burial grounds located off Tiger Drain Road. This is on the very northern end of the county. Right, like I said, you guys know where Tiger Drain is. They'll be using it to do the ground penetrating radar to locate where the bodies are located, put up markers, clear up the underbrush, put in some new signage. $50,000, and there's no match.
Is that cemetery, is it right at the end of Tiger Drain? Right at the very end?
It's actually off Tiger Drain at the end, yes. It's off in the woods.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, the city of Lake City wants to put Reggie Jergens back on the TDC, so we're asking you to appoint him to the TDC.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
And that's it, thank you very much.
All right, it's time for open comments to the board from the public. Anybody want to talk about anything? Okay. Staff comments?
I have a couple. The Town of Fort White had voted to request for us to administer two FERDAP grants for them, each one being $50,000 for playground equipment. Commissioner Ford could tell us the exact parks, I think one was Dees Park, and the other one was, which one?
Johnny May Bryant Park.
And so Clint's looking at it to determine what can you do for $50,000, because what they put in the grant is a lot more than you can do for that $50,000, and we've reached out to the people that are administering it, and of course, being the holidays, we've not been able to get up with the folks in Tallahassee. So they've asked us to do it. We have not said yea or nay yet, but I wanted the board to be aware, we are looking at it, and we're waiting for Clint to go out to both parks and tell us what can and can't be done.
We're also, I guess you're waiting to get ahold of somebody in Tallahassee, you'd find out what they, what they expect us to be able to do with, for that money, or what it requires.
Right, if, if they expect us to do a full playground, so for instance, they get $50,000 to put a playground in at Dees Park, which is one of the things they wanted, they also want to pick ground for picnic pavilions and things. We know from experience, a single set of playground equipment exceeds $50,000.
Well, we know for a fact that that centerpiece we put at the community center, the park near Fort White, that one playground equipment there, we replaced a couple of years ago with $80,000. Yeah. I don't know what they, I was about to say, we're trying to figure out what they would like us to do for $50,000.
But since it is us doing work for the Town of Fort White, we want to make sure that the board was aware of it. And if there's any issues, please let us know. The second one is Columbia EMS. In an effort to help them meet their response times on the east side of Lake City, we're allowing them to operate out of the Lake City Reporter Building until such time as they can locate a permanent facility. So probably about six months or so. So they started that today. So you'll have, what was happening is they were looking at their response times, and those calls that were on the eastern half of the city, eastern half of the county, they were having difficulties making their times. So by moving ambulances further, closer to where those calls are, they can cut their response times and hopefully make their targets. So we are monitoring them closely and keeping tabs on it. So they are in the Lake City Reporter Building for now. Want to remind everybody, the Utility Authority is meeting on the 7th, this time it's in Live Oak, if anybody would like to attend. In terms of the Fort White line, we're still in the process of doing the testing and clearing. It is connected, there are some minor, you know, things you do at the end of any project that you have to touch up on your checklist, but for the most part, we're still in the process of clearing the line, doing the testing, the back teeth, and making sure it's disinfected. But it should be operational within the month of January. And that's it.
All right, we have any commissioner comments?
I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and look forward to the new year and what, maybe what we can get accomplished this year. We've got a lot of things on the horizon, and I think a lot of them are going to come to fruition by the end of this year, so look forward to that.
I say the same thing that Rocky does, but I also want us all to pray, starting right now, that we don't have any more storms come through this county. It's one of my biggest things I'll pray for. But, go ahead.